Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littster?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, are there anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report today.
All right, thank you.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight...
Not yet.
Not yet. We're going to do Pledge of Allegiance first, and we have a very special guest doing it tonight.
He went off because I did something out of order, so I really messed it up.
Exactly. She paused too long.
I was out of order. Mr. Eason, would you please lead us in our flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Now, we move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for a vote? The motion passes unanimously? Thank you. Are there any items for agenda review?
There are not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none, we can move on. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1. Presentation of Certificate of Commendation to PW Gillibrand Company Incorporated and Community Services Manager Kimberly Post is here to present this item, and accepting the certificate is Vice President Brandon Thasing.
Good evening. Good evening. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, and members of the City Council. Tonight, I am honored to recognize PW Gillibrand Company Incorporated for their extraordinary generosity and unwavering commitment to the seniors of our community. Over the past three years, PW Gillibrand has gone above and beyond in their support of the city's senior nutrition program and senior share programs. Each year, they purchase four age animals at the Ventura County Fair, have them processed and packaged, and donate approximately 1,800 pounds of high-quality meat to the senior center. In total, their contribution exceeds $100,000 in beef, ham, veal, and steaks, provided at no cost to either the city or to our seniors. At a time when funding for food programs has decreased and food costs continue to rise, this generosity has been invaluable. Their donations ensure seniors receive nutritious, well-balanced meals through our onsite congregate lunch, Meals on Wheels, and Senior Share food programs. PW Gillibrand's commitment has made a meaningful, lasting difference in the lives of hundreds of older adults in Simi Valley. On behalf of the City Council and the entire community, we extend our deepest gratitude for their remarkable kindness, community spirit, and steadfast support. Their contributions truly exemplify what it means to invest in the well-being of others. It is now my privilege to present the certificate of commendation to Brandon Thasing, President and Chief Executive Officer of PW Gillibrand Company Incorporated, in recognition of your outstanding dedication to improving the lives of our community members.
PW Gillibrand has been around for so, so many years, and you've continued to give to our community for so long. Without your generous contributions to our senior center and the foods, we probably would not be able to do what we do. So, we just thank you and your family so very much for everything. Do I just say some words?
No, just thank you very much. We appreciate it very much, and we're happy to help.
Thank you. She wants pictures. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 1D2. Presentation of Certificate of Appreciation to Outgoing Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Member and Senior Management Analyst Lindsay Scaringe is here to present this item.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, we recognize an outgoing member of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. The advisory committee members are committed to the city's continued efforts to provide services and community improvements to low- and moderate-income residents. During his tenure, beginning in January 2023, this committee member diligently reviewed, evaluated, and recommended funding allocations which benefited Simi Valley citizens. Unfortunately, he's unable to join us this evening, but please join me in congratulating outgoing committee member Mr. Andy Hannah on a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. We're sorry to have missed you, but we appreciate your service to our community. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. We have no speaker cards for this item this evening. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A1. Appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, and Senior Management Analyst Lindsay Scaringe is presenting this item as well.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. The five-member Block Grant Advisory Committee was established by City Council in 2006. Members are appointed to provide funding recommendations on annual block grant applications. One member is completing his term on December 31st. To fill this vacancy, staff is presenting Mr. Andy Guitia as a nominee. Mr. Guitia is in attendance this evening, and I now ask him to step forward, please. It is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint Mr. Andy Guitia to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee for a term commencing on January 1st, 2026, and expiring on December 31st, 2028.
I'll move the appointment.
And I'd love to second it and point out that he is from District 3, and I'm very proud that he's willing to serve. Thank you. Will you vote yes for me, please? The motion passes unanimously? Thank you. Congratulations. We appreciate your service to the community. Thank you.
I want to thank the council, mayor, and the council members for this appointment. I'm very thankful and grateful and very honored to be appointed to this position, and I will do my utmost to look at the grants and approve the grants and review them and work with the other members of the advisory council.
Very good. Thank you so much again. Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A2. Appointment of City Council Members to the 2026 July 4 Planning Committee and Management Analyst Kristen Miller is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. Simi Valley has hosted an annual free fireworks display on July 4th since 1970. This event is organized by the Kiwanis Club of Simi Valley and with the city contributing $30,000 annually for the cost of fireworks display and providing police services. In anticipation of the nation's 250th anniversary in 2026 and in direct response to growing community interest, event organizers are exploring ways to expand and enhance the celebration by forming a joint planning committee. On November 6th, the Kiwanis Club requested the appointment of up to two City Council members to serve on the 2026 July 4 Planning Committee. It is anticipated that six one-hour planning committee meetings will be held with the first meeting scheduled in mid to late January. Although subject to change, these monthly meetings will be held in person or in a hybrid format. Therefore, it is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint up to two City Council members to the 2026 July 4 Planning Committee. This concludes staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Ayala, councilmember.
I didn't know I was first. I would... If the council, you know, is in favor, I would like to be part of the committee. I think that not just wanting to be part of it, but also my experience in managing projects like this would be helpful to the committee that they have formed, because that's truly what it is, is a project that has a completion date and needs to get done. And so I think I can help them to stay on track and report back to the council any activities that need to happen.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one question, and then I have a comment. My question is, can staff, rather than council, be appointed to this committee, or can they serve on the committee?
That is a great question.
The Kiwanis specifically asked for a council member, or up to two.
Okay. And while I think that there's value in having our input of what we would agree and think is awesome, what's going to be asked of the city is stuff that we're going to have to then move on and go to staff. So, if there is an opening or a thought towards appointing staff members, that might also be helpful. The comment that I have in terms of serving, the Rotary Club, the Noon Rotary Club did this event for decades.
Over 40 years.
Over 40 years, and there's some course knowledge experience on the dais over there.
I don't know who you're pointing at.
And I know this is a difficult event, and so just saying, there's an experienced person on the dais that might lend her expertise to that, so.
I was a member that Rotary Club and did the Fourth of July, I think, for 25 years. So, all right, I will volunteer if nobody else wants to. Mayor Pro Tem Judge? Thank you. Councilmember Littster?
Actually, that sounds wonderful. I was going to say, I love the Fourth of July. I'm delighted that we're doing this, and I echo Councilmember Rhodes' comment that I think there should be two members, and I think that there should also be staff up. Just because they requested two, I think there ought to be staff as well. So, I would encourage that to be also part of it. I actually, I think it's great. I was going to nominate Councilmember Ayala. I was actually going to see if Mayor Pro Tem Judge wanted to be part of it, because he's been very involved for years, but mayor, if you're willing, that's lovely.
Only if nobody else wants it. Exactly. Okay.
So, I'd be happy to nominate the two of you then. That'd be great.
Second.
Call for the vote? The motion passes unanimously? Thank you. Thought I could get away with that. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3C1. Presentation by Ventura County Fire Department Division Chief Dan Horton. He should be here in just a second. I just saw him a little bit ago. Assistant Chief Purcell, you want to start? Here he comes. Thank you. Got a little too quick for you, chief.
Sorry, I thought I had a minute.
That's all right. It raises up too if you need the... There's a button on the front there.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council and City Manager Argurbright. Tonight, Fire Inspector Afrim Malki and I will be providing an informational update on emergency services, statistics in the city of Simi Valley, a review of our new whole-blood program, and an update on the fire hazard severity zone maps. We have a slide. It's okay. This is going really good.
It'll just get better.
All right, perfect. IT support. Thank you, Heather. If we can just advance that next slide. Perfect, thank you. This first slide summarizes the calls for service through the end of Quarter 3 on September 30th. During the third quarter this year, we responded to 2,914 calls for service in the city of Simi Valley. This was a 4.6% decrease from the second quarter. As of September 30th, we've responded to 12,134 calls, which is a 2.4% increase over the previous 12 months. Medical-related calls totaled 2,335, which is a drop of just 0.6% from the previous quarter. On average, medical calls make up approximately 80% of the annual call volume here in Simi Valley and throughout the county. Of those 2,334 medical-related calls, 484 were due to falls, which was an increase of 2.8% over the previous quarter. Regarding fires, we responded to six brush fires, which was an increase of 20% over the last quarter, but that's a normal increase, being that that was the hottest time of the year. We responded to 12 structure fires, an increase of 20% compared to the second quarter, and 23 miscellaneous fires, which is a 20.7% decline from the previous quarter. Next slide, please. Thank you. In Quarter 3, we responded to 2,914 incidents, averaging 32 calls per day in the city. The most frequent types, incident types include medical emergencies, public service calls, alarms, and traffic collisions. In the upper right-hand corner of the slide, you'll see a graph depicting the number of calls by hour of the day. As you'd expect, the busiest hours are from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. when people are most active. Tracking this incident data helps us ensure we're providing the highest level of service to the city throughout the year. Next slide. Next, I want to talk to you about a new initiative that we embarked on this last year, and it's our whole-blood program. On April 1st, 2025, in partnership with VCMC, the Ventura County EMS Agency, and Vitalant Blood Bank, VCFD launched a groundbreaking emergency whole-blood transfusion program. The Ventura County Fire Department was the first in California to administer whole-blood, excuse me, in the field, setting a precedence for advanced pre-hospital care. Currently, all five VCFD paramedic rescue ambulances carry whole-blood daily. This includes Rescue Ambulance 41 out of Station 41 on Church Street. Additionally, three of the Ventura County Aviation Unit helicopters also carry whole-blood. To date, our Ventura County Fire Department paramedics have provided over 25 transfusions in the field, significantly improving the outcome of trauma patients. This photo highlights a significant milestone for us. Our first successful field transfusion under the new program with the patient being delivered to VCMC in Ventura. It demonstrates effectiveness of our training and our coordination and the real-world impact this innovation is already having on patient survival, and I'm proud to say that this patient lived. Patients in Ventura County benefit from field-administered whole-blood transfusions through faster, more effective treatment of traumatic injuries and critical bleeding. The whole-blood transfusions in the field allow our paramedics to begin life-saving treatment immediately rather than waiting until they arrive at the hospital. Early transfusion significantly increases the chances of survival for patients experiencing severe blood loss, especially in the cases of blunt or penetrating trauma. By quickly restoring blood volume and pressure, whole-blood transfusions help prevent complications like hypovolemic shock and multi-organ failure. This new program positions Ventura County Fire as a leader in pre-hospital emergency care and sets a new standard for trauma across the state. Now, I'll turn it over to Fire Inspector Afrim Malki, who will give you an update on the fire hazard severity zone maps.
Thank you, chief.
Good evening, mayor, City Council. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We jumped. So, what are the fire hazard severity zone maps? Basically, they designate areas based on the potential of wildfire hazard, not the immediate risk. It's a key tool for local land use decisions for all the cities within our jurisdiction, for building codes, emergency planning, fire safety regulations. As we continue to build and move further into the wildland urban interface, it's ultimately becoming more of an intermix now. So, it evaluates hazard, not risk, in terms of the probability that a fire will impact an area based upon the fire history and the topography and potential fuels. So, potential for a fire to ignite and spread based on physical conditions, that'd be the hazard and the risk, potential damage and consequences to people and property that may occur if that hazard is not, or results in a fire, considering existing mitigation efforts. So, defensible space, this is one of the mitigation efforts, and you hear "defensible space" very often. Basically, we want to give our first responders, police, fire, a safer space to defend your home. That's really what it is. Okay? It's a buffer in the fuel zone, or it's a buffer zone in the fuel reduction zone between the home and the surrounding vegetation. It starts with Zone 1, non-combustible zone. So, anything that can, combustible or anything that can burn should be removed. Zone 1 is from 5 feet to 30 feet off of the house. Okay, you want to prevent ember ignition in that area. And Zone 2 is the reduced fuel zone, so 30 feet and out to 100 feet. This is just an overview of what your 0 to 5-foot zone looks like, 5 feet off of the exterior wall of the house. 5 to 30 is your intermediate zone, and the extended zone is a 30 to 100-foot zone. So, new update, by the end of December, we should be hearing from the Board of Forestry regarding existing homes. Currently in effect, new homes, so anything that's being built randy today has to comply with Zone 0. And anything that falls in the state responsibility area under the moderate, high, or very high zone, it takes effect. For the local responsibility area, it's just a very high severity zone. So, for existing homes, that'll take effect January 1st. We should hear something by the end of December. There are finalizing requirements that'll apply retroactively to all existing structures within those zones. And what does that mean for all the homeowners? Well, we have three years to comply. So, January 1st, 2029, nothing's happening overnight. It's going to be a phase-out. We will assist with the compliance. It's going to be a phase-out. There may be some financial issues or illnesses that a homeowner cannot, you know, make those changes within that three-year mark, and we'll be there to work with them. Some numbers from the Board of Forestry. 1.25 million structures are being affected in the state responsibility area. 870,000 structures in the local responsibility. Statewide, that's about 17%. What are some prevention efforts? Currently, defensible space, as we discussed, through our fire hazard reduction program. This is a program that's nationally recognized. It helps reduce the risk to homes and businesses. It really does work. April 20th, we send out 19,000-plus notices, and there's a deadline in June 1st. Again, we're there to work with everyone. June 1st is an always-met. As long as the work is being done, we will push forward and make sure that brush clearance is taken care of and their home and properties safe. Next slide. If anyone approaches anyone that needs or wants to start a firewise community within their neighborhood, or HOA, or wherever it may be, it starts with the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council. That's step one, and they will walk them through every step. And they've been very supportive and very successful in getting these And they've been very supportive and very successful in getting these communities started. For all of us, we want to stay informed, stay alert, stay safe. Okay, so if you haven't logged on or registered, go to VC Alert, get future emergency notifications, and VC Emergency for real-time updates on your cell phone. And that'll help everyone be prepared and ready to go. If there are any, if there's more information, go to our website, vcfd.gov, and click on the Fire Prevention tab, go to Community Wildfire Preparedness, and there's a lot more information there. If you would like to email us, email us at fhrp@venturacounty.gov. Feel free to give us a call anytime, and we'll get back to you. Thank you.
That'll conclude our presentation for this evening, we'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Of course, there's questions. Councilmember Lipster.
Thank you, I'd first like to commend you for being the first to have whole blood transfusions in the field, that's fabulous.
Thank you, we're extremely proud. There were several agencies that started at the same time, we just happened to be the ones that were actually able to apply it to our first patients, so it was a pretty exciting time for us.
Tremendous, tremendous, so thank you for being so proactive. Question for you is, last City Council meeting, I believe, one of the agenda items was to approve our code updates, et cetera, which included a lot of interior sprinklers, for, et cetera, for, but places I'm reading are suggesting that maybe what are needed not so much are internal sprinklers, but external, I mean, from wildfire, that there seems to be more ignition from outside sources as opposed to internal. But I just would love to get your thoughts or comments on it.
So, yeah, I'm aware of the questions that came up surrounding that, and I'll probably end up deferring it to my subject matter expert here in the fire prevention world, but there may be a little bit misunderstanding on some of the fire hazard severity zone maps that were put out and the building code requirements that are tied to that versus the existing building code, which was what was just presented back then in reference to the interior sprinklers. That's been around since like 1985. So, that isn't a new change per se, but we might be blending the severity zone maps and existing building codes together, and that might be where some of the confusion is coming from. But I would like to turn it over to Afram, if you can expand on that a little bit.
I would have to agree with that.
Right, it just seemed to me that there were, I don't know, maybe more was being required, for instance, for remodeling, et cetera, and things in the past, but.
Again, any new construction, interior fire sprinklers required?
Yeah.
Fire and life safety, just to allow the residents to escape a home fire, but will it help prevent a wildfire from taking over that home? Probably not.
And so, but there's no move to put external sprinklers on top, I'm just, I.
That's not part of the, that's, no, that's not part of the initiative with the fire hazard severity zone maps. I can't answer that accurately.
And that's all right, and so this is my last, another question with regards to some of the combustion around the home and defensible space. Again, someplace I was reading talked about actually full-growth trees can actually act, depending on the species, can act as a catch for flying embers and actually could be assisting in that, in kind of severe fire situation. Is that in error, is that accurate?
There have been some instances where, after a wildfire goes through a neighborhood, trees are still standing. And sure, if it's a large oak, healthy oak, or a healthy tree, it may protect and act as a catcher's mitt for an ember cast or an ember, you know, during an ember storm. It's the immediate zone around the house is what we want to be concerned with, is zero.
And I guess I'm asking these questions, this is not a way to get rid of all of our trees in our, in our community, I just want to.
Not at all, we wouldn't, we'd never want anyone to cut down a tree or remove a tree. It's just trimming back those limbs or branches if they're within 3 to 5 feet of a roof, or within 10 feet of a chimney. And that's as far as we go with that.
Got it, okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Clarification on whole blood. And this means that in the field, you don't have to do a typing and you can just administer blood. And there, have there been any side effects from administering whole blood to a patient?
None that we're aware of, but great question, because obviously there's several different blood types, right? So, the blood type that they're administering in the field is Typo, which is the, known as the universal blood. It's, it's, I don't want to go too far down the medical side because I'm not qualified to speak to it. We're only giving about a liter at a time. I would imagine, you know, that's, that's good for the moment, once they get to a hospital where they've got the vast array of different blood types, they're able to infuse the person's proper blood type. But this has been tested in the medical environment for years. It's new that we're doing it in the field now. I think it's, it's been around probably used in the military and other applications for a while. But to answer your specific question, no ill effects have been noted so far.
And prior to this, was there any blood administered in the field, or any?
No, just simple saline-type solution, you know, that you would get in an IV bag.
Wow, congratulations on that, one life saved already, already worth whatever the.
One that we know of, there's been 25 administered, I don't have the statistics, I plan to get them in the future, and I'm sure that the survivability out of those 25 has been pretty remarkable.
Fantastic. You talked about topography. In Simi Valley, one of the things that gets us a lot is the power shut-offs that Edison does. So, I imagine that topography includes the funneling of winds into particular areas, because we have certain parts of the city that get affected by these power shut-offs more than other parts of the city. Is that what would designate into a high-fire zone?
There's a lot of factors that go into it, it's, it's fire history, it's the probability, it's terrain, fuel type. A lot of those that come together to create that equation that the maps were based off of. Again, going back to the hazard, not necessarily the risk, which is the difference that the insurance companies are using. So, it's really a combination of different things. But again, a large piece of that is fire history. And where we know that we're, that we've had fires, that we expect to get them in the future just because they're prone to burning, and we've got those areas all around the county.
And I'm glad you said insurance companies. One of my questions is, with the FireSafe program, is there any anecdotal evidence that a community that has gone through the efforts of becoming a FireSafe community has actually been able to then get or get reductions in their insurance premiums? Because I think that's a strategy, if it works, it's a strategy we should be implementing in Simi.
Absolutely. Do you want to take that?
I don't have data on the numbers, that would be something for the FireSafe Regional Council to address, maybe they have the data that supports that.
Because if there's an outcome that works, people will do it, right? If my insurance rates are going to come down, I'll organize my community. And, and so, if we can, if that data exists, we'll reach out to FireSafe and try and figure that out.
Absolutely, and that, that insurance is a big deal, it's just, you know, regardless, we still want the communities to be as safe as possible, get that defensible space, and it's a bonus if they get the discounts.
And when I was looking at the statistics of how many units are out there, and I think, are they all in Simi Valley? It just seems like we're here. One last question about Zone 0. For an existing home, is wood decking something that needs to be replaced with a non-combustible decking material?
Yeah, it's highly advisable, anything that is combustible, okay? Even vinyl fencing, it melts, it'll eventually burn with the intensity of the heat. So, wood decking, wood fencing, I know it's costly, but it's highly advisable to replace it. If it comes down to a fence, you would only have to replace the 5-foot portion that it comes off of the house to a non-combustible material, leave the rest of the fence. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate your time.
My pleasure, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3C2, Runcle Canyon Quarterly Update by Representative of Runcle Canyon LLC, Jordan Ferguson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Jordan Ferguson, I'm from Pacopio, and I'm here tonight representing Runcle Canyon LLC to provide you the first quarterly update on progress the developers made since you approved a development agreement extension on October 6th. As a quick reminder of where we stand here, we established a series of milestones in that extension to allow the developer in the city to ensure the project is proceeding in a timely fashion. Those fell into two buckets, we had the soft milestones, target dates that we all hoped we would hit, and then we had the hard milestones, which come with a financial penalty and put further extension of the development agreement in jeopardy if they're not achieved. Since the approval, we've had the deadline for two soft milestones pass, and I'm pleased to report that both have been achieved. Developers submitted at-risk building plans to plan check for the senior units and recreation center back in October. All payments have been made to the city, and the plans have been fully submitted for staff's review. Those plans have been deemed complete by staff, and we're expecting any comments back before the holidays. Additionally, the PD application for the remaining 21 estate lots has been submitted, and invoice is being prepared by staff prior to their review. So, the top line here for everyone is, developers meeting its deadlines, we're working in tandem with staff to ensure the project is moving forward as efficiently as possible. By way of further update, all four of the initial estate lots, which will be located at 162, 176, 190, and 198 Redwood Grove Court, have had final plans accepted and landscape plans approved, and developers on track to meet the next soft milestone of building permit issuance on those four lots before the end of the year. Developer and staff are doing a site walk this Thursday, December 4th, to address grading comments that are out in the field, as well as to begin to determine a punch list of maintenance items for the existing tract, so that those can be addressed in tandem with further construction activity. I also met with the Woodlands HOA on November 19th to address any new issues and to provide them with an update on both the maintenance issues and the progress of the project in general. Between now and when you see me again in March, developer hopes to begin construction on the first four estate lots, and to have both the PD applications for the senior site and the remaining estate lots deemed complete. Developer would like to thank staff for all their hard work and all the support to move this project forward, and I am here to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, are there any questions from Council? Councilmember Rhodes.
Mine is not a question, mine is a thank you. This is the momentum, the direction, and the clarity that we've wanted on this project for years and years, and that's the type of successful report that we'd like to hear. Is there anything that you can point to that would, you would say, hey, we could use some more support from the city or staff at this point?
I really appreciate the question, I can tell you, we're getting everything we need from staff right now, everyone's been wonderful. And so, the progress is a credit to them as well as to developer.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you, I also had written down what was supposed to be completed by the report time, and you were able to hit all of them. My question was, from the HOA meeting that you had, were there any issues or new concerns that came up with the residents that you are concerned about?
Nothing that is of concern, there was one issue raised about a streetlight that flickers at night. We're working on that and should have a resolution there soon, but no other major issues were highlighted.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation, we're glad you're hitting all those milestones.
Thank you all, and I'll see you again in March.
See you then.
Happy holidays in the meantime.
Thank you, you too.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 4, Public Statements. Since there are no public hearings under Agenda Item 5 this evening, Agenda Items 4 and 6 are combined, and the City Council will hear all public statements under this Agenda Item 4. Agenda Item 4 and 6 are timed for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and information reports. Speakers will be called in in the order in which the car was submitted to speak for this public statement, item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Madam Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
Proceed.
Thank you. I'll be calling three speakers at a time, so you know who you follow. Heather Moss, Betty King, and Linda Bosley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, and Mr. Ford. I'm Heather Moss, a Simi Valley resident and business member. Tonight, I'll address the legal risks and neighborhood burdens of STRs overlooked in the city's August 4th memorandum. The memo ignores the city's liability exposure and the corrosive strain STRs impose. Platform and host insurance don't cover adjoining public property, so each booking poses a dire risk of liability to the city. Transient foot and vehicle traffic then floods neighborhoods not built for commercial turnover, further eroding the city's aging infrastructure. The memo draws comparisons to tourist and resort towns, Simi is neither. Moore Park, our sister city, and now ranked as one of California's safest cities, banned STRs in 2018 due to neighborhood disruption. Even a tourist-driven city like Indio allows STRs only in a host's primary residence to prevent investor-run transient lodging. The memo recommends a good neighbor policy if an STR ordinance is adopted. Most listings already include this generic lingo, yet STR lodgers routinely disregard quiet hours, trample neighbors' flower beds and lawns, leave litter, encroach on streets and sidewalks, overwhelm street parking, let children wander onto neighboring properties, and bring pets that use neighbors' yards as their toilets. With no enforcement, the proposed policy is a facade. Per the city memo, Simi's hotel occupancy was only 72.5% last year, suggesting STRs siphon business from licensed lodging. Neighbors bear the harmful fallout, chronic nuisance, noise, litter, and a relentless rotation of strangers. Crime tourists are drawn to STRs for the anonymity and absence of premises oversight. STRs have no onsite staff, no front desk custodians, security, or trained personnel to handle emergencies. During a recent power outage, several STR lodgers in Simi were left in the dark, literally, while the STRs' off-site hosts were absent and unreachable. If STRs continue, regulations must be enforceable. Require a city-issued STR permit, no listings or bookings without one. Hold platforms liable for hosting unpermitted properties. Limit STRs to primary residences with an onsite host. Mandate commercial-grade inspection and safety, ADA compliance, pool fencing, onsite-only parking, and strict occupancy and booking caps. TOT alone is not sufficient. Please ban STRs or enact strict STR regulations. Thank you.
Betty King.
Hi, I'm Betty King, and I'm a resident of Simi Valley. And I'm here tonight, by the way, Council, Mayor Kavanaugh and Councilman, I'm here tonight to represent the Council on Aging. And as many of you know, we're, I'm the event chairman of the Meals on Wheels program benefiting, we're benefiting Meals on Wheels and producing The Legends of Soul, strictly to raise funds where the government has got the funding for this program. And I'm here tonight mainly to try to seek your support with your communities to get the word out about these two wonderful programs. These are A-list performers, not tribute shows, that are coming to Simi Valley. And it's quite challenging, because this time of year, getting sponsors and advertisers, as you know, is not the best time in the world. So, we really need to sell out the performances. The one that, we have two of them, the one that is this coming Sunday, the 7th, is Quadressoul, who are the former members of The Fifth Dimension. This is not a tribute show. These are the group that have performed for 20 years. So, we right now currently have approximately 100 tickets still for sale. So, it's my hope, the council asked me to come and address you and see since you are also influential with your communities, to help us get the word out. We moved the show that was scheduled for the 6th, because we found out people in Simi Valley do not like to drive in the evening. So, we moved it to January 4th to make it a matinee. The other thing is, we have so many dignitaries coming to these shows, and it was advised for me to come and let you know about this, because maybe you're unaware. The mayor of LA, Karen Bass, will be coming. We have dignitaries coming from the supervisor's office in Ventura County. We have people coming from Calabasas, from Moore Park, you know, a lot of dignitaries coming. And it's my hope that we'll have Simi Valley represented at these shows as well. And we have some flyers out at the, you know, out on the table outside the door, and hope, you know, members of the audience and yourselves would help us get these out so we can get these tickets sold. Because, like I said, sponsorship has been pretty nail, and the ad. advertisers, we have a beautiful program book, and that's also small. So it's really important to make the money for Meals on Wheels by, you know, having a full audience. So thank you for your allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Bosley, and I am a resident of Villa del Arroyo Mobile Home Park. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the residents, management, and the owner of Villa del Arroyo, as well as local business owners near the homeless encampment on West Los Angeles Avenue in the city of Simi Valley. I would like to thank the City Council for listening to our concerns on November 17th. Additionally, I would like to express our appreciation to Councilman Ayala for his planned visit next week to the encampment to see the conditions firsthand. Since November 17th, we have observed the following things. County workers and law enforcement, on three different occasions, have been at the encampment offering services to individuals living in the Arroyo. On November 19th, Sergeant Johnson from Simi Valley Police Department checked in by phone with Villa del Arroyo managers, telling them that he was getting vendor quotes for the encampment cleanup. Further, he would advise management when the cleanup will begin. However, the large piles of mattresses, numerous five-gallon water bottles, wood debris, and other trash are clearly visible to cars driving down West Los Angeles Avenue, as are the tents and tarps erected by individuals in the encampment. On Wednesday, November 26th, at noon, a large group from a local church set up tables and served food on the edge of the encampment. We observed not only adults coming out of the Arroyo for the meal, but children as well. Church members parked in the driveway of the local business owner, blocking business traffic from entering and leaving. This morning, weather reports for the week included the threat of moderate Santa Ana winds today and again on Thursday. La Niña conditions will keep Southern California mostly dry through December, as reported by the news. La Niña is an offshore flow and gusty Santa Ana winds that bring warmer temperatures to our region. Hearing these weather reports makes residents of Villa del Arroyo extremely anxious, mainly because of the open flame cooking and warming fires that people in the encampment use on a daily basis. Yesterday at 4:00 PM, Ventura County Fire was called out to extinguish a fire in the homeless encampment. At the November 17th City Council meeting, the city manager and at least one council member stated that because of the upcoming holidays, there would be, could be, a delay in the cleanup and removal.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bosley, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers, John Smith, Mike Shaw, and Allyn Eason.
Good evening. My name's John Smith. I'm a resident of Moore Park, and I'm here tonight to follow up on the concerns raised last month regarding the homeless encampments in the city, particularly those along the Arroyo-Simi. Many residents spoke at the last meeting, and we asked what was being done and how the situation would be addressed, and what progress we could expect to see. Some time has passed, and tonight I'm asking for clarity, transparency, and measurable steps forward. We understand homelessness is complex. We know human beings are involved, people who need mental health care, addiction treatment, job support, and housing pathways. We also know that our public spaces must remain safe, accessible, and healthy for the entire community. Both realities can exist at once. We can be compassionate and still expect accountability, responsibility, and actions. Simi has tools: the Homeless Task Force, resource coordination meetings, and partnerships with nonprofits. These structures are good, but structure without results leaves both the housed and unhoused in limbo. We need to know what progress has been made since last month's public comments. Were the encampments cleared, relocated, or contacted by outreach teams? We've heard that they have, but we haven't really seen a lot of progress on the front lines. How many individuals were offered those homeless services, and how many actually accepted? And most importantly, what is the plan moving forward? Residents deserve updates, not just acknowledgement. We need timelines, metrics, and follow-through. And if the city lacks resources or authority to solve the problem alone, tell us. Inform the public where the bottleneck is. Is it funding, beds, county coordination, policy restrictions? If something is preventing action, be transparent so we as a community can push forward to seek the support that we need. Tonight, I'm asking the council to provide a public report, not months from now, but soon, on the current status of the encampments, resource efforts, and service outcomes. Show us the data, show us the progress, show us what we need to do to push harder. We all want the same thing, and that's a safer community: a cleaner Arroyo, healthy public spaces, and humane treatment for those who have fallen into crisis. But wanting is not enough. We need measurable movement, we need leadership that the community can see, track, and hold accountable. Thank you for your time. I look forward to your response, not just for tonight, but in the actions that may be taken between this meeting and the next. Thank you.
Hope everybody's fine today. Little bit of update just on the 4th of July, since we're going to have a commission. We're having a bit of a difficulty with Parks and Rec because they're planning a big modernization project that's supposed to take place next year, right at the time we're talking about. We've reviewed alternate locations. Town Center was too close to the freeway for the fallout. Duck Park, too many trees for the fallout of the fireworks. They need a clear area. So let's just keep our fingers crossed that it can work out where we have Santa Susana Park facility for our 4th of July festivities. The next thing I was going to quickly talk about was, we've been hearing for weeks and weeks about STRs and how horrible the effect of the STRs are on the surrounding neighbors. I think I told you all years ago, I was involved with a repo property up in the Chico area. It had 25 homes built on a 400-acre ranch or farm with a big skein lake in the middle, and they dotted around the outside. One of the people at that lake, the doctor died, and his wife started renting their house out for weddings. The rest of the neighbors got all upset. It went to a vote, and lo and behold, the one vote that was missing was some knucklehead down in Simi Valley. And they said, what do you think? And I, so I talked to my friends, and they're, hey, you have to stick up for people's rights to do what they want with their own property. Mm-hmm. But then, again, the rights of all the people that didn't have any choice and have them just pushed on them. Well, I heard about permit and regulate, and it sounded cool. I had no idea what permit and regulate was going to get at, but that's what I voted for. Well, I wasn't very popular with the rest of the residents that didn't want the STRs. And what I found out in the short time that I was involved with that property was that they allowed them to have one, that lady to have one weekend a month. Well, one weekend a month, all other 24 residents were put out, didn't like what was going on, because that one resident was allowed to be able to use her property and make money. So from that lesson, I learned that I'll never vote for permit and regulate. I'll vote for no STRs. Thank you for listening. I'll talk to you later.
I'm Allyn Eason, and I live here in Simi Valley. This is the ninth consecutive time I've come to speak in strong support of a total ban of all residential short-term rentals. Except Mayor Kavanaugh, none of this council has ever seriously considered banning short-term rentals. In fact, at least three of you use them whenever traveling. I understand this council's reluctance to directly talk to residents about this issue, as those of you opposing a ban do not actually represent the majority of your voters. It seems like your objective has been to keep people unaware and uninformed regarding STRs. The discussion of banning or regulating STRs was never an agenda item at the neighborhood council meetings. Why haven't you sent this issue back to the neighborhood councils? Why not take a survey or a poll? How about a town hall meeting? Why not create a ballot initiative for voters to decide? Are you afraid that regulating STRs is not what the majority of residents want? Jim, Anthony, and I decided that we would try to inform and educate Simi Valley residents about short-term rentals. Starting on October the 4th, we went door-to-door into a handful of city-sponsored events. We got a sampling of people throughout Simi who signed our petition to ban all STRs. Signatures are of residents 18 years or older. Although this is just a poll, I'm sure there are many, many, many more residents in favor of a ban. Even though only three of us come to speak at every city council meeting, we represent countless thousands of residents and voters who are in favor of banning STRs. It's a shame that this council wants voters to increase taxes on hotels, but not ask whether or not they actually want the STRs they seek to tax. Does this council actually believe in democracy, or only when it furthers their unpopular agenda? The opposition to banning STRs does not seem to exist in person. Its only support comes from letters to the editor in the Acorn, a number of which have names that do not appear to be actual Simi residents, having content that sounds more like AI-generated than any human being. For the sake of our children, our neighborhoods, and our future, I urge you to support a total ban on STRs. It is time to protect the character of our community and make sure that the next generation can enjoy the same safe and peaceful city that we've all come to love. Anyone in favor of banning short-term rentals, please show up next city council meeting on Monday, December 15th at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers, Anthony Eason, LaRonda Warner, and Anthony Angelini.
Before I get started, I'd like to present the signed petitions to the council, asking the council to ban short-term rentals. My name is Anthony Eason. I'm a longtime resident, not transient, of Simi Valley. Here are the top 10 reasons the City Council should ban unhosted residential short-term rentals in Simi Valley. Number 10: No one has ever moved to a city so they could live next to an unhosted short-term rental. You wish to attract transients, not residents. I believe you were put in office to represent residents. Number 9: Owning property does not give people the right to do anything they want with their property. It's actually ridiculous for anyone to believe that. Number 8: Transient tenants of existing homes converted to STRs do not bring more money to local businesses than permanent residents that would live in the same home. The revenue from permits and TOT taxes benefits the city, not local businesses. Number 7: People living in local neighborhoods with HOAs will have no say in if they wish to ban STRs. City ordinance will prevail. Number 6: STRs are not compatible with existing zoning code, which was crafted to have residential zones separate from business areas. It's not just using a room in a residential house as a home office for a business. The homes that become STRs are the business. They become neighborhood motels for transient guests. This is not why these neighborhood homes were built. Number 5: If STRs and their owners weren't a problem for cities, why did the California State Senate see the need to pass SB 346? Number 4: Just because some of the council members like to use them for business or vacations, it doesn't make it right for them to legalize them in our city. Number 3: It's certainly no vacation for the homeowners that have to live next to them. Number 2: If any of you are honest, you would admit that you wouldn't want to live next to one. And number 1 reason: The decision you make on these will not be forgotten. Many of you are up for election next year. We will see how well your decision sits with the public you are supposed to represent. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Judge, Mayor, excuse me, and City Councilmembers. My name is LaRonda Warner. I've been a resident here, a homeowner. I bought a home here three years ago. Me and my 13-year-old daughter moved here, thought it was a quiet community, good to raise kids here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here as a mother who is deeply concerned and urgently seeking action to protect my daughter and ensure her safety, safety of all students within our school district. Over the past few weeks, my daughter has experienced multiple serious safety threats at Senanola Middle School. What has taken place is not normal, not acceptable, not something any child or family should have to endure. My daughter is new to the school district. She started school here for the very first time. She's always been home schooled, so she asked me if she can go to back to regular school because she was going to middle school. I said, that's fine. Yet, within the first three days of school, 15 students attempted to jump her on campus and threaten her, and was waiting for her after school. This was not a misunderstanding. This was not a small argument. This was a target-coordinated attempt to physically harm my daughter. She did not know any student at this school district in Simi Valley, first time attending school here at all. She was scared, overwhelmed, and completely unprepared for the level of aggression as a parent, receiving that phone call, one of the most terrifying moments of my life, to have a principal call me and say, your daughter is fine. I don't want you to worry. She's okay. How do I take that as a mother? Despite reporting the incidents, despite reaching out, despite trusting the school who stepped in, my daughter was not given the protection or follow-up care she deserved. Just last week, after lunch on campus, the assistant principal was standing by the eating area for the kids. The kids, 10 kids watched her until she turned her back and approached my daughter on campus. Once again, threatened to jump her, they circled around her, they were telling her what they were going to do to her, using foul language. This all started at 9:00 AM in one of her classes. One of the young ladies told my daughter, all kind of MF, just foul language, the teacher assistant heard, well, the, what do you call it, the, not a teacher assistant, but the teacher that, what do you call them? I, what is it called? No, no, no. The teacher that stands for a teacher.
I'm sorry, Ms. Warner, your time is up.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're allowed three minutes, but we'll address it after.
Thank you.
Well, and if you could just, Ms. Warner, if you would not go anywhere, I'd like you to speak with Assistant Chief Purcell. He's standing over there in the corner, and he can assist you as well. And we'll make sure that we communicate your concerns to the school district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of City Council, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the film ad hoc committee agenda item coming up. My name is Anthony Angelini. I'm Director of I'm Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also the Staff Liaison for the Film Simi Valley Committee at the Chamber. I want to start by saying how encouraged I am to see this item before you. The idea of a film ad hoc committee hosted by the city signals that our leaders recognize the real potential of the film industry here and are willing to take meaningful steps to support it. This is something that we are genuinely glad to see, and it's long overdue, so thank you for taking steps to support this. For those of you who may not be familiar, Film Simi Valley is the marketing brand that was newly reorganized as a committee over the past year, and it grew out of what was once a small working group under the Tourism Board, and it now operates entirely under the Chamber of Commerce. Our participants include studio owners, directors, filmmakers, members of the Teamsters Location Scouts, as well as our great county representatives, including Supervisor Parvin, and our representatives from the city, Mayor Kavanaugh and Councilmember Ayala. And our city staff particularly like to thank Angel Sierra and Luis Garabe and Ryan Fowler for their work in responding to the community needs. These are great meetings. There's growing enthusiasm, and the energy in the room has been really great and honestly remarkable. We're already seeing results. Film Simi Valley, the website, attracts hundreds of visitors a month. Many of those visitors discover local locations that lead directly to productions choosing to film here. On top of that, we have active advertisements running in industry outlets and directories like Location Magazine and Compass, and we proudly sponsor the California On-Location Awards and the Location Manager Guild International Awards. These efforts keep Simi Valley present in places where the decisions are made. Most of our funding comes from our hotel partners, and we've begun to bring in outside revenue as well, like a recent collaboration with the AJU Brandeis Campus on the Compass ad. Partnerships like that help relieve pressure on the Tourism Board. I don't view this proposed committee as competing with our work. In fact, I see it a reflection of the progress that all of us have been making, and that the city is taking this sector seriously, and it's something that we welcome. The city does not have an official film office or commission, and we believe this committee could be a helpful step in moving that forward. The Chamber remains the representative of the industry and the stakeholders, but we are encouraged by it, and we look forward to working alongside you to make sure that Simi Valley continues to grow as a filming destination. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to this effort. Have a good night.
The next three speakers, Chris Chestnut, Myra Welsh, and Ken Hurst.
Hello, my name is Chris Chestnut, longtime resident of Simi Valley. I'm here to speak up for those who can't right now. Recently, the Department of Justice put out a report that said in the Chicago raids, 97.4% of the over 600 people DHS detained have zero criminal records. So I don't know how it could be any more clear that the federal raids this country has been enduring this year have nothing to do with getting rid of dangerous criminals and everything to do with unjust ethnic cleansing. And support for the families in our communities living in fear right now from an overreaching federal government can't come soon enough. Even on Thanksgiving, we had ICE activity in our county. In Thousand Oaks, a man that has been living here for 25 years was talked into signing his self-deportation papers, leaving behind his wife and kids. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't let a piece of documentation dictate whether I care or not about a person's civil rights of my neighbor that's been living here for 25 years, not when we've been living in the same neighborhoods, shopping at the same stores, our kids all play together, et cetera, et cetera. These people are our friends, our neighbors, and so much more. Everyone should feel welcome and safe to be here. We've been fortunate that it's been quiet in our city lately, but it's only a matter of time before ICE activity comes back to Simi. Therefore, we need to fortify ourselves with whatever legal options we have available. So, unelected Mayor Kavanaugh, I want to thank you for saying in the last meeting that you will have ICE immigration information made available this month, but I believe it's going to take more than some know-your-rights videos and links buried somewhere on the city website to meet the needs of our times. I would suggest that you look into solutions that other US cities have already started implementing. For example, you could create city ordinance that requires federal agents to remain unmasked and identifiable in most situations. This would create an additional layer of legal accountability for them, separate from similar state and federal laws. Encourage our local police force to enforce basic city ordinance on the ICE agents. This would include enforcing their use of swapping license plates or having no plates at all. I also suggest you could designate part of the city's budget to allocating funds towards illegal offense aid, focus on helping the impacted families, such as the ones that got crashed into a few months ago. In addition, you can also follow in San Francisco's footsteps and create ICE-free zones that prohibit federal agents from using certain public spaces. Don't let them use our public parking lots. Don't let them our facilities without warrants. Don't even let them use our bathrooms. Give them nothing that is not legally required of us. Publicly let them know they are not welcome here, and we keep our people safe, our people safe, all of them. And I sincerely hope you see the value and need in this public safety matter.
Myra Welsh. I apologize.
Sorry, I dropped the gun.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and honorable council members. Everyone here. My name is Myra Welsh, and I've been living in Simi Valley since mid-1980s. Prior to coming here, I had to decide, I had to find out where to live, and it came down to two places. One was West Covina, and the other one was Simi Valley. West Covina, I used to work downtown LA, and West Covina was only 15 miles away, while Simi Valley is about 37 miles away. But I didn't go to West Covina. Instead, I came to Simi Valley. And why? It's because West Covina was a toxic place. They used to have the dumping place over there. They have that toxic dump. And so, I bought this place here, and then what do you know? I find out that the Los Angeles County is dumping all their trash here in our vicinity. I'm not sure if everybody here knows about that, but if you go to 118 Freeway, you'll see that dump trucks are coming all the way from Topanga Canyon and everywhere from Los Angeles. I hope that this will stop. I don't want our place to be polluted. This place is a beautiful country. Our land, our air, and water should not be polluted. So please, for everybody who has the power, everybody who don't know, to know that there's such thing going on, they're dumping their trash in this area, and please, for those who are in power, please stop them. I urge you to stop them from bringing all the trash here in our area. Let's keep our place clean for our children, if not for us.
Members of the council, thank you for agreeing, for arranging the meeting with members of 805 UndocuFund and Joseph Ayala and City Manager Argabright recently. Also, thank you for adding the Community Information and Immigration Resources file to the city website, which includes information about legal aid. I would urge you to please consider joining other Ventura County cities to contribute to the Legal Aid Fund. This fund helps defend the American bedrock principle that everyone should have due process. Lastly, thank you for agreeing to look into the Flock camera data access issue. For those who don't know, Flock is a company that has been installing cameras with automatic license plate recognition capability built in. They record all the license plates that drive by a given camera. Simi Valley has a contract with Flock to install them around various places in the city for law enforcement purposes. Flock takes all these license plate numbers, and in some cases, reported in the media, combines it with shopping information, face recognition from other security cameras, and other information to build profiles for each of us. These profiles are then sold. This raises significant privacy issues. At the meeting, you thought that the Simi cameras were not used that way, but rather only for Simi Valley Police Department use, and they're not shared with ICE. You were going to check if the Flock cameras could use, the Flock company could use their cameras and use the Simi Valley data in ways outside of the Simi Valley Police Department. I look forward to the results of your inquiry. Thank you very much.
Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that we are gathered on land historically inhabited by the Trumash people. We honor their enduring presence, their resilience, and their continued contributions to this region. Hi, my name is Jamie Sanchez, and I'm here again to speak on awareness issues for this month. December is Seasonal Affective Disorder Awareness Month, something that affects more people than you may realize. It was a beautiful sunny day here in Simi Valley. Those were the last words the man who raised me spoke, while firefighters from Station 41, shout out to first responders, worked on him. He passed on December 28th, 2023. His birthday was November 27th, 1951. The holidays just haven't felt the same without him, and I know I'm not the only one who goes through this in this time of year. Grief, loneliness, and mental health struggles happen too many times. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but the recent murders in our city hit me a little hard. I don't know the people involved. I don't know very much information, other than it happened during the holiday season. Having lost my dad, moments like this feel closer to home. They remind us how fragile life is and how important it is to stay aware and supportive and present for one another. December is also Universal Human Rights Month. The unprofessional conduct of ICE agents, including excessive worth kidnappings in abuse and detention centers, conflicts with basic human rights standards. Families have been living in fear and trauma for months. They've asked repeatedly for transparency and acknowledgement. They deserve to know when their concerns will be formally presented and taken seriously. This is not an issue that should continue to be pushed aside. Simi Valley has hit the news too many times, like recently, and not for the good, and I wonder, what can we do together to make the city better? How can we support each other, address mental issues, struggles, and prevent violence, and build a stronger, safer, and more connected community for everyone? These are questions I hope we can begin to answer, not just in words, but in actions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was the last speaker. Next item on the agenda is Item 4, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Addressed a couple of the topics tonight. First of all, and she left, but Betty King, thank you for coming from the Council on Aging and letting us know. Please, everyone, Quadrisole this Sunday, 100 tickets left, get out and get them. I'm looking forward to it. The Meals on Wheels program, by the way, yes, county funding has been cut. We had some funding that we were able to prop it last year, but we need additional fundraising and help to keep that program alive. It's super important for our community, and so any help you can give, please do so. Ms. Bosley and Mr. Smith, I think you'll hear a little bit about homeless encampment progress. We are fully aware of what's going on in the Arroyo. It's not new to us, and we are, we have some bids out, bids in. Do you want to give an update, please?
So, staff was able to secure three bids for work. We were able to identify a bidder. We are in the process of securing a contract with them now, and we have been going out with backpack medicine, and we did notice the site as legally required before we can start clearing that site. So, we are hoping to have that encampment cleanup happen sooner rather than later, as soon as we can get that contract in place. And then also, our partners with Waste Management have agreed to take up to 20 tons of the materials there at no cost to the city and at a discounted rate after that. So, we are moving forward with that, and staff has been diligently working and following up on that to ensure that we can get that cleaned up as soon as possible. And addressing, I think it was Ms. Bosley who mentioned that there were warming fires and that VCFD had to respond. Obviously, anytime that you're seeing anything like that, please call VCFD, because then we can address it. If we don't know that it's happening, then we can't do anything about it. So, thank you very much for bringing our attention to those matters, and staff is working, and again, we're hoping to get that cleaned up as soon as possible.
Thank you.
On the short-term rentals, Ms. Moss, thank you for the email you sent to me with very constructive, actionable things that are in it. That advances the conversation. I appreciate you very much. I'm looking forward to our draft presentation on an STR ordinance next meeting. Already dealt with the school. I'm so sorry that happened to your daughter, and I think you probably have found out that we do have resource officers there, but it is a school district jurisdiction, but we hear you, and I hope you got some good feedback there. Okay, I think that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler.
Thank you. I could echo some of all of what's been said, but I think I wanted to say a couple other things. Jamie, thank you for coming and speaking to seasonal affective disorder and your loss and just what it means at this time, because it is true. In fact, I found my, well, I'm not going to, but I find that we go from joy to despair at these holidays, which we shouldn't, but I think it becomes human, and so, an awareness is critical, and just shining a light on it and the services to be provided is critical. So, thank you for coming and speaking and helping us to remember and to, again, to focus our attention where it needs to be. The gentleman who spoke about, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, yes, Ken? Ken, I'm sorry, actually. Normally, I write it down. I missed you, and I apologize, Ken. Just one of your comments in terms of the Flock data usage, I don't know that we've had a report yet about, I know how it's used specifically by our first responders, particularly near on-ramps to catch, et cetera, but I will make more inquiries to see if it's being misused or used not the way that we have intended it, so I will follow up there. And Myra, thank you for coming to speak here just this evening, and thank you for choosing Simi Valley over West Covina. I think you made the right choice. Just want you to know that. And I understand that, I will tell you that WM, my experience having visited several times, they're very, they have very stringent standards of what they accept and how they dispose of things, but I understand your concern is that we are accepting a disproportionate amount of trash coming from the LA County, and that is of concern. Unfortunately, that landfill is regulated by the county. We don't have control, per se. That being said, we can speak out and speak to quantities, et cetera, and so investigate that further, but thank you for what you shared and what you're observing. LaRonda, I'm sorry, we met briefly beforehand, and if this is your beautiful daughter next to you, thank you for being willing to come to see council tonight and being part of the conversation, your sweetheart for doing that, and we really hope there is immediate resolution, and it's not right in any way, so we will be listening to hear to be sure that's being resolved. So, thank you for, but so sorry. Thanks for being here tonight, though. Appreciate it. With regards to the homeless encampment, thank you for that, Samantha, because I was going to comment about... going to comment about that. And I'll just conclude, well, Anthony, we'll be talking. We appreciate what you're doing with tourism and with, and I know that there's a lot of support for the actions tonight to discuss how we can further the cause for film Simi. Betty King, yes, I was going to say, and she's, we can talk about her because she's not here, I'm kidding. This sweet woman who's on the Council on Aging, she is the one that has connections, who's through the years, she has sponsored these people and worked with them and promoted them, and here she, in her retirement years, is taking those contacts to benefit the senior community here in Simi Valley. And so, please, I'm with Councilmember Rhodes, support the concert this Sunday and the one on January 4th. And so, I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pro Tem Judge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I basically just wanted to promote the council, the concert this Sunday at the Civic Center, or this Cultural Arts Center. And please, if you have the wherewithal and you can go, please go buy a ticket. It's a very important cause, and it does great for, it's a great thing for our community. Also, I was going to mention that Councilmember Littler did that the concert that was scheduled for Saturday has been moved to January 4th. So, if you don't want to go this Sunday, buy a ticket for that one, because we, those are great events, and we need that support over there. And also, I'm very happy you brought forward those concerns from Sinaloa Junior High. I'll make sure that the school district, the folks that I know over there, get my opinion on that. I'm glad you talked to our police chief, because I think that's very important, gets stuff done there, too. Otherwise, thanks for coming out tonight and speaking.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayala.
I don't want to repeat what everyone said, but I would only say to Mrs. Warner, do you know, do you have a contact at the school district of who you can talk to? Do you know who you're going to talk to tomorrow? If you don't, just see me after the meeting. We just want to make sure you have a direct contact, so tomorrow morning you know exactly who you're going to talk to. All right?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate you taking the time to share your concerns and questions and such with us. I will repeat, Sinaloa is a great school, and I am so sorry your daughter is having those problems there. So, we will make sure that you get to talk to the right people. All right? Thank you. Mr. Shaw, as always, location is always a good thing, so we'll work on that. The Eastons, of course, you know how my standing and such, so we'll see what we can do. We'll look at the, what staff comes up with, see what we need to do there. Jamie, I really enjoy when you come out and you speak from the heart, so that was nice. But you, it is a good reminder about mental health, especially during the holidays. It's very hard for people that don't have families and/or have lost people. I still tear up when I think about my dad, so I completely understand. So, please, everyone be aware of your friends, family, neighbors, and make sure everyone's in the right place in their thoughts. And then, I had one last thing, and I forgot what it was. Oh, I was just going to say, also, the Soul Legends, the two concerts, I got a preview of it at the Senior Center a couple months ago. These ladies and their groups are fantastic. So, if you have an opportunity to go on the 7th, I won't be here, I have a prior engagement on the 7th, but I'm going to make sure I'm at the January 4th event. But they were, these ladies were fantastic. They were great musicians, hearts, and just really interesting people to talk to, and some great history there. So, with that, we can move on to our next item. Thank you. I'm sorry, we're not allowed to talk back and forth because the item's not on the agenda? Did you have just a real quick question? Okay, so, I know. Okay, I'm sorry, Myra, we can't do anything with that right now, but City Manager?
I was going to say, Myra, if you could speak with Heather Sumagaisai, she's right there, she'll be able to give you some contact information, and then we can address your concerns.
All right. So, she's right there. She'll be able to help you.
Brown jacket.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council? Next on the agenda is Item 7, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
There's no objection, Madam Mayor. I'll move consent.
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 8A, Continued Business. Adopt a resolution approving the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of employment for management designated employees, approve the reclassification of four employees, and approve a supplemental budget request. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2025-38/WWD-301, a joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley and the Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number Eight, establishing terms and conditions of employment for management designated employees, and repealing Resolution Number 2023-13 and previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict herewith. Assistant City Manager Louise Garabey and Senior Human Resources Analyst Shannon Nash are here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. This item was initially introduced at November 17th, 2025, City Council Meeting, itemizing the changed terms and conditions of employment for the Unrepresented Management Group over a two-year period inclusive of fiscal years 2025-26 and 2026-27. We did receive some public comment late this afternoon related to the format of the staff reports, and there are no additional changes to the proposed terms and conditions. As an overview, the major changes included a one-time payment of $1,000 for the paycheck of January 2nd, 2026, a 3% salary range adjustment also applied to employee base pay for that same paycheck, increase in Simi Flex benefit for both the 2026 and 2027 plan years of $2,406 a month for management and $2,600 a month for executive management, with the opt-out amounts remaining static. Annual leave accrual limits defined for the Chief of Police will be in his contract. The reclassification of four positions and the current incumbents as outlined in the staff report, which will be effective December 15th, 2025. A 3% salary range adjustment also applied to employee base pay effective for the pay period that includes July 1st of 2026. Following that, a 3% salary range adjustment in 2026, the bottom 5% of all salary ranges would be eliminated. The total cost over the two years is estimated at $2.48 million, with approximately 26% of the year one cost funded by personnel savings realized from vacancies. The year two costs will be included in the next fiscal year's budget process. Staff is requesting that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2025-38 and Resolution Number WWD-301 to approve the changes included in the staff report and to approve the appropriation of approximately $748,000 from the general fund fund balance for the remainder of the current fiscal year. As a reminder, the motion that is made this evening will need to include the oral report that is outlined in the staff report in accordance with Government Code Section 54953(c)(3). This concludes staff's report, and we're available for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. You referenced the letter or the public comment that we received to be in the record, and I wondered if you would just address maybe one of the overriding questions or statements that she was making. She contends that the city will be in violation of state law if they use the Housing Successor Agency Fund 201 to cover employment salaries. Could you speak to her concern?
Sure. I don't know the full history of when this originally came up, but I do know that as part of the wind down or redevelopment, there was a portion, I believe it's 5%, of the remaining funds that were in the Housing Succession that we could use for administrative costs. So, there's certain employees in finance, environmental services, and other departments that help, are helping with the wind down. So, a small portion of their salaries are being used or being offset by that Housing Successor Agency Fund, and that's something that's done through all the housing, most of the housing agencies that are still left throughout the state. So, it's nothing uncommon.
Understood. Thank you. I just wanted to publicly have that response to her. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns for staff? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Moral, motion, I move to adopt Joint Resolution Number 2025-38 and Resolution Number WWD-301 to approve the revisions to the items and conditions of employment for management designated employees, approve the reclassification of four employees, and approve the appropriation of $747,933 from the general fund balance for fiscal year 2025-26.
Second.
I have to finish this.
Are you having a?
That's why I had to take a breath. In accordance with Government Code Section 5493, 953(c)(3), sorry, a summary of these benefits for various positions identified below is reported as follows. For the position of Chief of Police, City Clerk, Deputy City Manager, Nonconfidential Environmental Services Director, Public Works Director, and Community Services Director, revisions to pay ranges and compensation unless specified under individual contracts are as followed, effective November 17th, 2025, the Simi Flex benefit will increase for all but the City Clerk to $2,600 a month. The Simi Flex benefit will increase for the City Clerk to $2,406 per month, effective December 15th, 2025, a 3% salary increase that includes adjustment to pay ranges will be implemented, effective in January 2nd, 2026. I'm never going to do this. Paycheck, the one-time lump sum payment of $1,000 will be included as long as the incumbents are employed with the city or district for the entire period, beginning December 15th, 2025, to December 28th, 2025, effective June 29th, 2026, a 3% salary increase that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented following the 3% adjusted to the pay ranges. The bottom 5% of the pay ranges will be eliminated. All of the prior benefits will remain at the same level.
Now, I'll take a second.
I thought he should read the next page.
We could.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 9A, Consideration of the Proposed Revisions to the Terms and Conditions of the Employment of the Memorandum of Agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 721. Assistant City Manager Louise Garabey and Senior Human Resources Analyst Shannon Nash are presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight for your consideration is a memorandum of agreement between the city and SEIU Local 721. A few months ago, council provided a direction to the city's negotiating team to negotiate a new MOA with SEIU that would help address salary parity issues and assist the city with their employee retention and attraction efforts, all while still being fiscally responsible. Staff and SEIU's negotiating team believe that the following proposal for your consideration helps accomplish both of those goals. The proposed three-year agreement includes 3% salary increases each year. This is on par with what several other agencies in the region are currently providing to their staff. In addition, there would be a one-time $1,000 payment for all regular status employees. Simi Flex, the employees cafeteria plan benefit, will have a flat 2406 per month allocation for, throughout the term of the agreement. The city would also commit to making salary range adjustments over a 39-month period, broken up into four equal increments, to bring employee salaries up to market median in terms of total compensation. And what total compensation includes is salary benefits and other economic interests, not including retirement benefits. The proposal also includes minor increases to boot allowance, tuition reimbursement, and overtime meal allowance, in addition to some minor increase on deferred comp as well. The MOA, proposed MOA, also includes updated language and the incorporation of previously approved side letters. It's important just to quickly note that this proposal was ratified overwhelmingly by the SEIU membership. The total cost for the three-year agreement is approximately 5.9 million, with approximately 1.4 million of that coming in the current fiscal year. Staff has identified funds, including anticipated salary savings from vacancies to cover the year one costs. Future years would be incorporated as part of the normal budgeting process that comes before the council each year. So, tonight, staff is recommending that council considers the proposed revisions as presented and to bring back the item for final determination at the December 15th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Littler.
Not a question. I think you, that question answered that applied to both. I appreciate that, but willingness to make a motion if the time is appropriate. Although I picked a shorter one than Mayor Pro Tem.
No? Go ahead.
I move to consider the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the MOA with SEIU as presented, and allow the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination on the MOA. And I move to place this matter on the December 15th, 2025 City Council Board of Directors' meeting agenda for final determination on the proposed MOA.
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Next item.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 9B, Discussion and Possible Action to Establish a Film Ad-Hoc Committee, and Assistant City Manager Louise Garabey is presenting this item.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Councilmember. Tonight for your discussion is the potential establishment of a Film Ad-Hoc Committee. At the June 2025 City Council Retreat, the council identified the promotion of film and tourism as one of the council-focused area goals. Based on that direction, staff has established a film subcommittee comprised of a cross-section of city staff from the city manager's office, environmental services, Simi Valley Police Department, as well as administrative services, to identify opportunities to enhance and streamline the city's film program. In addition, as was mentioned previously, the Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Ayala, and staff are currently participating in the Chambers Film Roundtable Discussions. There's, depending on the goal, the goals of the council on this particular item and how they want to establish this committee, there's two committee structures that I think are worth mentioning and considering. The first would be the establishment of a Film Ad-Hoc Committee. That would be comprised of up to two of the council members, very similar to what was established when the council established the ad hoc committee for the Civic Center Amphitheater Project. They would research and brainstorm ideas to bring back to the council and provide recommendations. The second option would be a standing committee. The standing committee would also include or could include up to two council members, but would also be expand, could be expanded to include members of the general public, staff, other organizations. Now, one of the major differences to note is under the standing committee structure, they would be subject to the Brown Act and all the different things that go along with that. So, just something worth considering. So, with that, we'll open up the discussion to council, and staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, since I proposed it, do you mind if I go first? Okay. I would still, I would like to keep it as an ad hoc at this point in time. We do have the Film Commission that is already formalized, and if we keep it as an ad hoc, it will give us more flexibility. I've talked to a couple of different areas and have some thoughts and ideas to throw out there, and if we have to start standardizing and proposing or notifying the public when we have meetings and such, it'll just get a little too heavy. We already do that with the Film Commission and things like that. Do we, Anthony? Okay, those are not Brown Act, okay. So, but we get a lot of people there. Speaking of which, I have a new person for that commission. I would like to really just keep it as an ad hoc and kind of... I would like to really just keep it as an ad hoc and kind of be able to move easier and with less legalities and such in place. I wasn't aware, okay, I do have a question for the city attorney, though. So if, if two council members want to speak to a county, a city employee, we can do that, correctly?
That's correct. Because you're still not, it's not three council members, which is where all the stuff comes in.
So we could check with city manager and say, I'd like to talk to a planning, somebody in planning or the city manager's office. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we still had that. But that was more my thought process is just kind of look at things along those way, that way. And so obviously, I would like to be a part of that, if anyone doesn't mind.
Why don't we just leave it the same way it is, and with you and Councilmember Ayala, call it a day?
Sorry.
A couple of comments. I like the ad hoc committee because in the Film Commission meeting, we're not able to really look at existing policies and like look at things, ways to streamline processes and things that the city owns. And I think the ad hoc committee, because it has staff members, the staff would be able to look at the different processes we have and check to see where there might be ways to make things quicker, bottleneck, stuff like that, which then could benefit the committee that we have. In regards to participation, I like, kind of like the idea of, I mean, I wouldn't mind doing it, but spreading it, having more people coverage. So if there's someone else, another council member who wants to be on the ad hoc, because that's just a committee that will look at processes and it'll be over with, I'd be open to that, too.
I don't want to cut you off. I would like, I would say that I concur that an ad hoc committee is helpful. It is nimble, and I still have some questions about what can or cannot be done with ad hoc. But I would say, I know, Mayor, that you have some great ideas. If there was a consideration of someone other than Councilmember Ayala, I would certainly be happy to throw my hat in. I know that there's a handful of things that I would like explored, or maybe the ad hoc committee could explore. Everything from film overlay zones to potentially annexing land or, you know, for the purpose even weekly public noticing of filming to generate business to even lobbying the county, which I think we're already doing for changing their 90-day notice. I mean, there's just a handful of film ideas that I think an ad hoc committee could really explore and maybe come up with a report. So I just say I would be willing to throw my hat in, but if, I understand there may be others as well, so. But I, but I do have a few, couple of questions I would like to ask, if that's, if that's all right. Having served as an ad hoc committee in the past, I see the pros and cons. Of course, it would be very nice if we could, in essence, have a staff member who maybe isn't, isn't a member of the committee, but could be assigned to doing, helping with research. Is that, is that a possibility, or does it have to always be a different person?
So I, I think you can. I think that they just can't be a member of the ad hoc committee because it can only be comprised of the two council members, right? So if you had a staff member who was assisting, I don't think that that's any different than reaching out to a staff member with questions or sort of concerns, which doesn't seem to violate the rules.
And I don't know that I understood that previously when we were looking at our amphitheater. So that, that's very helpful to understand that. Okay.
And I think just as a note, staff, city staff has a policy that if there is a significant, significant amount of time or resources that need to be put into something that council members are asking for, then that's something that we just need to ensure that the whole council is on board for.
Yeah, and that was the other thing I was going to ask, because this is still a city manager form of government. And so sometimes the ad hocks sort of cross over into questions about your municipal code where you have to essentially run things through the city manager, which is the reason why generally you do the rotation of staff.
Got it. Okay, so we would, the ad hoc committee would go to city manager, and then she can guide as to who she, who has the time and/or effort or expertise to help with whatever questions.
Yeah, that'll work. Okay. Depending on the questions that you guys have, who would, who would respond to those.
Okay, yes, because I don't want somebody in planning having to respond to something that doesn't have to do with their area and vice versa. Okay. All right. Any other, Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could, Louise, could you, in a sentence, help differentiate what we're asking the city to create here and what already exists with our, our current film committee?
Do you want me to dive in?
One sentence. You could use two.
So Mayor Kavanaugh had requested that, that this item come before you to determine if you wanted to create something within the city, to just allow the council members to have the opportunity to kind of investigate the current city processes for filming, you know, what are we currently doing, where are there opportunities where we can improve to enhance filming opportunities, to encourage more filming in SEMI Valley? And currently, city staff processing the permits is very well-versed in our process and also is aware of what other communities do and could see some possible improvements there. And so with that, the council, the question being posed to the council was, first of all, do you want to do it as an ad hoc committee, or did you want to create something similar to what the Chamber is already doing? From a staff recommendation, I would never recommend duplicating those efforts, but really wanting to bring that forward to the council to determine if that ad hoc committee is something that you all found value in.
Excellent. I thought that that was the separation, and to Councilmember Ayala's point, if we have the same two people on both, we're not getting the extra layer of diversity. Having at least one of the liaison council members to that committee that can come back to our ad hoc and say, hey, let's ask these questions to see if we can get feedback, and adding a different council person would be, I think, beneficial, not mandatory, of course. So if Councilwoman Littler would like to do that, I would support that.
I would, if it's all right with everyone here. May I have a motion?
She's already, seems like she already has ideas, so you should run with those. Those are great ideas. I would move to that we, let's see, I think we actually have a real motion in here, don't we? I move that the city council establish a Film Ad-Hoc Committee to evaluate and recommend strengths, strategies to enhance SEMI Valley's competitiveness as a filming destination, and that Mayor Kavanaugh and Councilmember Littler be appointed to serve on the Film Ad-Hoc Committee.
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. I oversee an area where I see how different things work, and that's kind of what brought this all up, when I, when I see the volume that other areas are getting, so. So thank you all, everybody.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Very good. Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. I hope everyone had a really good Thanksgiving break. Seems like it was very quiet around here. So I don't have too much to report. Tuesday, November 18th, I was a panelist for the YMCA Youth and Government Program, where they were preparing their bill to be presented in Sacramento. Mr. Angelina was also part of the panel with me. It was a great experience. The youth did a great job. On Friday, November 21st, I volunteered at the Thanksgiving food drive, also at the YMCA, and then attended the Veterans Dinner sponsored by the Republican Women's Club, where Buzz Patterson, he's a Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force, he carried the nuclear football during the Clinton administration. He was the featured speaker. A couple of us were there. He had some great stories to share. It was really, really, and I actually got his book the next day from the library, read it in two days. I read all the great stories, so it was a good experience. And on Wednesday, November 26th, I volunteered at the Thanksgiving dinner at the Senior Center. And the rest of the time, I took off just to celebrate Thanksgiving five-day week, weekend.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, November 19th, via Zoom, I attended the Mayor and Council Members Roundtable on Zoom. That afternoon, I chaired, in the absence of Councilwoman Littler, the SEMI Valley Arts Commission meeting and had a successful and efficient meeting. And efficient because I needed to run away to the Building Industry Alliance banquet, and I got to hear some of the success stories of rebuilding in some of the fire zones, also some of the horror stories of how they've been blocked from building in some of the fire zones, and came away with some good information. On Friday, November 21st, I also attended the Veterans Dinner, and as Councilman Ayala said, it was a fantastic and informative presentation by Mr. Aldrin. Saturday, November 22nd, I had the pleasure once again of attending the tree lighting at the Town Center. They put it off because of rain the week before, so many people couldn't actually get there and redo it, but the majority of the dance troops and singing troops, they were there, and it was absolutely fantastic time, and it is one of the things that increases the sense of community in SEMI Valley. It makes what we do here mean something when you get everybody together and there's just happiness. And so thank you to the Town Center for always putting that on, and it was a great time. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes will be happy to know that I was gone the entire week. Actually, I will, I will say that I departed November the 18th for a vacation with my husband to the Big Island of Hawaii, and I was gone until Wednesday, right before Thanksgiving. And so that precluded all of the amazing activities that took place. That being said, I do want to comment a big thank you to Bill and Sue Klepper's daughter, Sophie, who oversaw that Thanksgiving dinner at the Senior Center, and just thank you for a family that, that does so much and that she's willing to, just to spend hours and hours coordinating that amazing event. So I just wanted to say thank you. Now, that being said, I did today attend a meeting that I'd like to share a couple of the comments that I, today I attended the Cal Cities, basically it was their meeting where they outlined all the bills that were signed into legislation, what they might, some of their effects on the city. I won't go through all of it, but I will say just some interesting statistics. Basically, this year, there were 30 new lawmakers that were signed, that were sworn into office, and they introduced 2,300 bills. Of that, 900 were passed and received by the governor's office. He signed 780 of them, meaning he vetoed 13.4%. So I just thought you'd find those statistics kind of interesting. And then there were just a few, I'm just going to quickly run through content that might affect us, that, that you'd find interesting. SB 456, basically muralists no longer have to have a contractor's license. That means we can have more murals in our city. It makes it easier for murals. AB 492, basically, the DHCS has to notify the city anytime a new drug treatment facility is licensed. And so we can kind of monitor that, and that's a new development, and that's good. SB 394, basically, any utility, which we are, we are a water utility, can now bring civil cause of action for issues like, let's say there was fire hydrant water diversion or things that might affect our, affect our, our utility, for instance. Now, this one you'll appreciate, SB 827, this is for elected officials. We have more training. Basically, they've now decided that we will now be receiving, in addition to the ethics training, the other training, we will be receiving, we need two hours of fiscal training a year. So I thought you'd like to know that we're going to learn better how to manage our finances, I thought, thanks to the state legislature, and that's maybe, it may be a good thing.
Did our budget meeting count for that?
I leave that to our city manager to have that, to make that decision.
If I get the invitation to teach, I'll do it.
I'm just the messenger. I just thought I'd share a few more of these bills that, that these are, that were signed into law. The other thing that, AB 789, again, as candidates up here, I thought you'd appreciate to know that we can use our campaign money for security expenses now. So just that, in case you're having a rough day and you've been threatened and you have money, you can spend it for that. AB 370, Public Records Act, basically, we can have, give more time to our, this is for Lucy, to our city clerk, she has more time to deal with public records requests if it's taking place during a cyber attack. So just wanted her to know that. Anyway, almost done, a few more that I just found, found interesting. AB 468, increased penalties for lewd evacuation sites, obviously the horrific fires and what transpired that generated that. Senate Bill 4346, that's the one that discusses air, basically VRBOs or short-term rentals. Thank you. What was clear in their discussion of that is that in order to take, to receive notification of, for the city to receive notification of how many, who's renting in the, or how many exist, there needs to be an ordinance adopted by the city. So that made it very clear that we need to have an ordinance if we want any action, so, and with that regards. I think that's about it, that I will, well, maybe, no, I could have shared that AB 476 increases record-keeping of, of, basically, you know how people will steal catalytic converters and scrap metal, et cetera? Basically, now AB 476 increases the record-keeping requirements for scrap metal recipients, et cetera, on both sides, so that hopefully making it more difficult to fence some of streetlights and electrical vehicle chargers and all the things that have been, anyway, that has become creative. But what became clear is that we have, that there are a lot more things to review that will be affecting our city, but appreciated that, I know that when I was here, many in the city were also watching and, and gleaning what they thought was important for their departments. So thank you that, so just wanted to share that. And that concludes, oh, the one thing I wanted to apologize, because I was out of town, I missed the promotion to shop local. So I was not part of that video, but I want to say here, from here, please, everyone, shop local. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Judge.
I'm still laughing about the legislature passing, making sure that we get trained on fiscal responsibility. That's rich. Oh, on Wednesday, November 19th, I too attended the BIA event up at the Skirball Center and learned a lot of stuff about the rebuilding and the fires, which the county supervisors from Los Angeles are actually in their areas where they're allowed to have control, have done a great job getting stuff rebuilt. We won't talk about the rest of the fire strike. Thursday, November 12th, during that evening, I must have caught something, because I had a cold Thursday and Friday, so I missed my chance to speak to the students at Royal High School, and I missed the Republican Women's Dinner. On Saturday, November 22nd, I was feeling a lot better, so I went to the tree lighting. And yes, it was great, the tree lighting lit, and that's the most important part. But the dancers and the singers and everything else, great job. Hats off to the Town Center. Jeff up there with his troops did a great job, and it always looks beautiful, and the tree was gorgeous, and like I said, it lit, so that was the most important part. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Let's see, oh, Thursday, November 20th, I had VCA's Ventura County Animal Services, our commission meeting in the morning out in Ventura. It's hard to get a parking place there when they have a whole parking lot closed. Yeah, I parked in E and I needed to go to A, so just be forewarned if you're going to the county, there's, parking lot B is closed. It's a long walk, but what I really want to say is we are so over, over our limit in animals. Please, 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 if you or anyone you know is even thinking about an animal, a dog or a cat, please look at our shelter. We have so many wonderful animals, and they're, we just have way too many, and we really want to do what's best for our animals, so please look, look to our shelters first. We have a small one here in SEMI, and we have the large one in Camarillo. So that would really be appreciated. I was supposed to have EDC that afternoon, but it was called, it was canceled, so we didn't have a quorum. So the next thing, I attended the Republican Women's Club Dinner. Buzz Patterson was very entertaining. You said Aldrin, yeah, but it's Patterson. But he was very entertaining, and he lives locally, so that's kind of nice. So go get his book.
My wife's, my wife's mother dated Buzz Aldrin.
Oh, that's why you said, okay, okay. But he was, he's a great speaker, and his book is good, right? Yeah, he had some entertaining things to say, so that was nice. Unfortunately, I missed the tree train, the tree lighting, because I had already committed to attend the Armenian-American Museum Heritage Gala. So... the Armenian-American Museum Heritage Gala. So with 1,000 people in that room, that was, it was a wonderful event. It was in LA at the Intercontinental. On Tuesday, I had the pleasure of attending, Tuesday, November 25, the annual interfaith Thanksgiving celebration. I was able to give the welcoming. It was very, very nice. Mr. Tolson keeps it pretty much on check. We had a lot of different faiths there, a lot of different people, and everyone got to speak a little portion. But my favorite part was, they had some little "I am thankful for"s. So I have just three I'm going to read. "I am thankful for the young children who are like ornaments in life and brighten the day." This one offsets that. "I am thankful for elderly people who are like pillars of wisdom." And then the cute one, it's a drawing, you can tell it's a child. "I am thankful for bed, home, family, friends, and food." So those are the important things in life. I just wanted to share those. On Wednesday, November 26, I also helped volunteer at the Thanksgiving Dinner for the seniors. It was a great event. Rotary Club SEMI Sunrise always does a great job at that. Santa was there, Santa and Mrs. Santa. There were so many volunteers, we were tripping over each other. But it really was a good evening and a wonderful event. I met a lady to be on our film commission. She used to do locations in Altadena. So she's trying to get, you know, reestablish a little bit out here. She lives here in SEMI Valley, so that would be very nice. And I just wanted to also thank the Chamber for Shop SEMI. The video was great. The four of us looked fantastic. I'm like, yeah, right, but, but we did, but we did, it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. Vander did a great job in cutting and pasting, or editing the video, so it was very nice. So that is the end of my report. And are there any future requests, can be, for future City Council agenda items? Seeing then, all right, thank you. We are going to be closing in memory of a few people here. So we're adjourning in memory of Mae Colbertson, who was with Mae's Catering here in SEMI for years and years and years. So our prayers and thoughts go out to her husband, Joel, and her son, Adam and Jack. Police Officer Alex Sanders from the city of Alhambra. Alec actually was a SEMI Valley police explorer here in SEMI Valley. He also is a graduate of SEMI Valley High School, and his family still lives here. We also have Boyd Vance Bretherton and Virginia Green. So with that, we're adjourned.